Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome all of those who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or on an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room should you want to speak on an issue this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through the part of this meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. Before we start tonight, we think it is important that we acknowledge that there are broken hearts throughout our district tonight for a difference-maker in our community. As a board, we want to offer our prayers, support to the family, friends, students, and staff affected in this trying time. With that, we're going to move forward with our agenda, and Alexa Blair is going to provide us with an invocation. Sorry, we do have a quorum. Everyone's here but Mrs. Duncan. She will not be here this evening.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this meeting and these people that care and invest in our students here in San Angelo. Lord, I pray for wisdom here as the decisions are going to be made. I pray that you would give us a spirit of unity. God, I pray over our schools and our students, Lord, that you would keep them safe, that you would show them what it looks like to serve and follow you. Lord, we lift up our teachers to you. God, that you would refresh them and give them the ability to continue to invest in the next generation here in San Angelo. And just in my prayer, amen.
All right. Next up, we have some wonderful students from Santa Rita Elementary. We have Brenly Vargas, Dean Taylor, Easton McKeska, Talia Williams, and August Suarez, who are going to help us with our pledges. If you all come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You guys stay for a picture. And parents, if you all want to take a picture, you can as well. Thank you, guys. All right. Next, we're going to have Ms. Shan Schwartz is going to come up and start us with our recognitions. And first, we have a recognition of SAISD employee veterans and Goodfellow Air Force Base partnership.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. Tonight, we begin with an important recognition as we honor and thank our nation's veterans, including San Angelo ISD alumni, family members, and past and present servicemen and women of Goodfellow Air Force Base. We extend special gratitude to our difference-maker employee veterans for their service and the value that they bring to our district and to our students. Their contributions to both our country and our students are immeasurable. Please join us in paying tribute to these dedicated individuals and to all who have served. First, we have Major Jason Esquell, our Lakeview High School Junior ROTC Instructor who proudly leads our Chiefs of Maidens in Aerospace Instruction after a 20-year career with the United States Air Force. Next is Technical Sergeant Sandra Bailey, our Lakeview High School Junior ROTC Instructor who completed tours all across the globe from Goodfellow Air Force Base to as far as South Korea. Lieutenant Colonel Jennifer Johnson, Major Christopher Carney, and Chief Master Sergeant Kathleen Prince from Central High School could not attend this evening, but we would still like to honor them for their service and commitment to our JROTC cadets. Finally, we would like to honor our important partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base and our San Angelo ISD military families. Thank you to Goodfellow for our San Angelo ISD military families that sacrificed so much for our country and to this community, and thank you for all that you do to support our students. Ms. Kristin Donaldson, School Liaison Program Manager, Mr. Chad Dowell, Seventeenth Training Wing Executive Director, and Mr. JR Orlando, the Seventeenth Training Wing Chief of Public Affairs, are joining us this evening to accept our appreciation on behalf of our partners with Goodfellow Air Force Base. It's a combination. We deeply appreciate the unique perspectives these service members bring to our schools and to the San Angelo community. Thank you for safeguarding the freedoms that we enjoy every day, and may God continue to
All right. Next, Coach Rodney Chant is going to come help us with a recognition of central athletes.
Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees, Dr. Moran, it's my honor to recognize the Central varsity tennis team. This team had a district record of five and oh and 25 and four overall for the season. They were the two 6A district champions going undefeated, the bi-district champions beating El Paso-Montwood 18 to 1, the area champions beating Byron Nelson 10 to 0, the 6A regional quarterfinal champions with a fantastic win over El Paso-Franklin 10 to 9, and then a regional semifinalist having been beat by Allen, who was eventual regional champion. This is the furthest the central tennis team has ever gone in the history of team tennis. They had an outstanding effort all year. The players put in long hours and hard work and dedication, and it paid off in the end. This team has set the new standard for tennis at Central High School, and we look forward to the future in this program. Now, I'd like to introduce the team and some of their superlatives. If you would, please hold your applause to the end and just wave whenever I call your name so that you can be recognized. Carson Adams, 10th grader. Sophia Blankenship, 9th grader. Jaylee Brenly, 11th grader, number four girls' singles, first-team all district, and number three girls' doubles, first-team all district. Kayden Carrasco, 11th grader. Trey Chavez, 9th grader, male district newcomer of the year, number six boys' singles, first-team all district, and number three boys' doubles, second-team all district. Hannah Harden, 11th grader, number two girls' singles, first-team all district, and number one girls' doubles, first-team all district. Channing Henson, 12th grader. Corbin Jastro, 12th grader. John Jung, 12th grader, number one boys' singles, all district honorable mention, and number one boys' doubles, co-second-team all district. Cole Jones, 11th grader, number three boys' doubles, team all district. Addison Cole, 11th grader, number six girls' singles, first-team all district, and number three girls' doubles, first-team all district. Rhett Meads, 12th grader, number three boys' singles, all district honorable mention, and number one boys' doubles, co-second-team all district. Alex Mendez, 11th grader, number five girls' singles, first-team, and number two girls' doubles, team all district. Gabby Mendez, 12th grader. George Napolies, 12th grader. Blaine Palmer, 12th grader, number four boys' singles, all district honorable mention, and number two boys', all district, first-team all district. Adithi Portarala, 11th grader, number one girls' singles, all district, second-team all district, and number one girls' doubles, first-team all district. Kirsten Robles, 12th grader, number three girls' singles, first-team all district, and mixed doubles, second-team all district. Leah Rupert, 12th grader, number two girls' doubles, first-team all district. Truett Sloan, 10th grader. Madison Salisbury, 11th grader. Brady Stewart, 11th grader, number two boys' singles, all district honorable mention, and mixed doubles, second-team all district. Trey Steele, 10th grader. Alex Stevens, 10th grader. Owen Trainer, 9th grader. And Bo Wilcox, 12th grader, number two boys', first-team all district. Coaches for the Bobcats are Head Coach Brent Abalas, who was the District Coach of the Year for 268, and his assistant, Amanda Weaver. Please give these athletes and coaches a round of applause for a historic season this year.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Tiffany Hebner coming up for recognitions of the College Board National Recognition Program honorees. Seems redundant.
Good afternoon, Superintendent and School Board. I'm Tiffany Hebner, and I'm here to talk to you guys about our amazing students that got awards from College Board AP Scholar Awards and National Recognitions. They're not here tonight because we already celebrated them at the campus, and I have a few pictures at the end. Oh, here's the clicker. Okay, so we had 36 students get an AP Scholar Award. It's kind of a big deal because you did really, really well on an AP exam, and those exams are tough. They take them in May, so they go through their whole course, and then they take this exam in May, and if they make a three, four, or five, they can get college credit. So, we had 36 that got an AP Scholar Award. You can read up there, that's a three or higher on three or more exams. Then we have 12 students that got the AP Scholar with Honors Award, and that requires you to have a 3.25 GPA and make a three or higher on four exams. And then we had 29 AP Scholar with Distinction. So, that's a GPA of 3.5, and you have to make a three or higher on five or more AP exams. We have students that take up to seven and eight exams, and they challenge them, and they do great. So, we're so very proud of them. So, we had 77 total AP Scholars. We also have 19 National Recognitions from students, and they have to have a 3.3 higher GPA, and they have to score 10% of their PSAT exam in the top 10%, and a three or higher on an AP exam. So, we had 19 of those, and you also have to identify as first-generation, black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, indigenous or Native American, or live in a rural area or small town. These are great awards to go on our college transcripts, and we're really excited that every year it seems that we have more and more students that achieve this goal. Here are a few pictures. They were served donuts and milk and juice and water, and they had a great time over at Central High School, just celebrating their success. It's a great group of students, and we're really proud of them.
All right. So, we have no public comments this evening, and so we'll move forward with our information items, and Jason Henry will be up here with a construction update.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Ty Cisco with Park Hill Architects to go over our major
Thank you. That's okay. This is the PDF, but I think we can see it. So, I think the best thing is we're finally starting to check some things off the list. There we go. So, they're getting ready to do the asphalt. This is over at McGill. There we go. Okay. So, they're getting ready to do asphalt. They're telling us it should be done before Thanksgiving. That's the plan. They're checking some things off the list. Playground's in, kitchen equipment, floor partitions, final cleaning is in. So, they're making a lot of progress, and it's kind of like building a house. Those last few things just seem to take forever, but we're getting really close. Landscaping and fencing are really the last things to happen at this point, but it's getting really close. And punch lists are being generated, and so those items will need to be checked and just to make sure everything's being done and finished up. So, a lot of things being wrapped up at this point. You can see here, most of the concrete flatwork is in, just getting ready for asphalt. Fence lines are being prepped, posts are going in, so the fences will go up next. Here's an interior view. The ceilings are in. Cleaning was being done when these pictures were taken. Looking really good. Interior of the classroom and the restroom facilities, this was before cleaning, but that's now been done as well. Over at Fannin, the concrete ramps down to the play courts and things has been completed as well. Landscape is getting finished up. They're setting curbs for fencing over there, too, so they're really close to being on the same pace at this point. Loading docks should be finished by the 20th, and working on some drainage, some of the drainage system as well. Here's some photos there, the basketball court side there by the playground. Some site furnishings going in there. You can see those laid on the side. Those will be put in this week as well. Basketball goals and fencing going in this week. So, that wraps up the photos. Any questions, comments? Getting really close.
I was going to ask you, the fencing, is that eight-foot fencing or six?
I think it's...
It's eight-foot, isn't it?
It's tall.
I was just wondering, I saw, like, that looks tall, so...
It is tall. And that's the new minimum, I believe.
And that's a requirement now, isn't it?
Yes, sir. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now, we have Jason Skelton, who's going to give us an update on Proposition A and the timeline of fund distribution.
Good evening, Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. Once we get this thing up, I want to talk to you a little bit about, just reviewing the Proposition A that was passed on November 5th, and then talk about a little bit of the compensation timeline. Before we get started, it's a big project. When you're changing compensation for every employee, and then you're retroactively going back, there's a lot of moving parts that we knew about, but then you start thinking, oh, well, you moved this position at this day, and then you moved this position on this day, and all that kind of stuff. It's been a lot of fun to watch to see how intricate, a lot of the intricacies that, on a daily basis, that human resources, payroll, and everybody go through. But, we have it up. Okay, awesome. So, just a little overview. A lot of the community knows, and first of all, thank you so much to the community for passing this and seeing the benefit of the pay increases for all staff members across the whole district. So, with the Proposition A, we looked at safety and security, and we talked about $1.2 million going to safety and security for officers on every campus. This is just one of the graphs that we laid out for Proposition A, showing how much funding that SAISD put in for officers last year and how much the state put in. It cost us $850,000 last year to fund the officers on campus, whereas the state only put in $330,000. So, it costs the district a little bit more than what the state provided. This year, we're expecting it to cost about $1.2 million, which means with Proposition A passing, that money is funded for officers on campus now, and we don't have to rely on the little bit of money that the state provides. That money can be allocated to other things like vestibules, fencing, and other things like that. So, we're really appreciative of that. But then the big thing was the pay increases for all staff. So, going back to what the Proposition A had was, is that we were going to do minimum payment of teacher salary. The teacher family was $50,000. So, it was 47.5 for zero-year, brand-new teachers, and that was lower than many of the districts that we compared to, significantly lower. We brought it up to $50,000. We felt that that was a great increase. And all teachers, all employees in the teacher job family, that includes nurses, other instructional specialists, those kinds of people that are certified in the teacher family, they all got a $2,500 pay raise, along with bumping the 47.5 to $50,000. That was actually 4.5% of midpoint. So, when we talk about 4% pay raises for everybody else, teachers got 4.5%, which came out to be $2,500. And then we talked about having a market adjustment for all other job families. That market adjustment, we recognized that there needed to be an adjustment in those pay raises to bring up the minimum wage in those job families, and so we brought those up. And if we, the way it worked was, if an employee, if the market adjustment was greater than 4%, the employee received the market adjustment. So, if a market adjustment happened and an employee went from, let's say, $11.80 an hour to $13.00 an hour, that was higher than 4% of their job family, so they got the higher of the increase. So, some people got 7%, 8%, 9% pay increases, where others got 4% because they were higher than the market adjustment. If their market adjustment was 1%, 2%, they received a 4% pay increase, and that was in every other job family. And then finally, I just said that, so the last bullet was what I just said. Okay, so here's how the payout's going to happen. We're going to see a flow of several paychecks coming in. So, of course, November 5th, Proposition A passed. November 11th, compensation was offered to new employees. That meant, starting November 11th, anybody that's hired after November 11th was on the new compensation plan, so we don't have to go back pay them with the old payment. So, if anybody gets offered a job starting now, then they're going to be offered on the new compensation plan, and that is up on the website. So, in December of '24, you notice I didn't put a specific date, the drag-up check's going to come because we don't know when. We're working on that right now with all employees to make sure that we have the right amount of drag-ups, and that drag-up check is the back pay from August or July or September. Whenever that employee started, they're going to get that pay of the new compensation plan moving forward. So, we're working on the beginning of December. That's going to happen before they get their regular paycheck in December. Now, this is for monthly pay. If you see the effective dates of the monthly, so if you're on a monthly paycheck, you're going to receive, these are the dates. December 20th is going to be a regular paycheck. They're not going to see an increase in their paycheck this time, but that drag-up check is going to be all their money from their effective start date of the year to December 20th. So, that'll come first, then their regular paycheck will come December, and they're going to see it's just going to be just like their November paycheck and their October paycheck. That won't change yet. December 23rd is when the new pay rates take effect for all employees, and this is, it sounds weird, but when we have overtime, we have to go back and pay back overtime as well. And so, any employee that's current, we're not, that December 22nd is the end of the pay cycle, which then pays out in January, and so that way, we're going to stop overtime and then catch up in January. So, I'll show you. So, if you look, pretty much everything stays the same in December for semi-monthly. They get two checks, one the 15th and one the 30th. If you see that January 2025, we're going to go back then and pay all overtime from the very beginning of the year up until now. It's very hard to calculate all of that together, so we're paying everybody what their regular salary for 40-hour week would be in December as a drag-up, and then we're going to go back and pay all the overtime that happened as a drag-up in January. And then for the semi-monthly, they're going to receive their current paycheck in December, or January 15th, and then their new pay rate is going to start January 30th, whereas the new pay rate for all monthly-paid employees is going to start January 23rd. So, January 23rd and January 30th, all employees will see their new pay change, their new monthly, and they should be caught up by then and move forward with their current rate. monthly, and they should be caught up by then and move forward with their current rate. That was a lot of information real fast. Do I have any questions?
Any questions?
You said the overtime pay's going to, well, can you go back? There it is. January, January, so that'll pay from August, September, all the way to that date.
Correct. Whenever the employees' contract started, because every employee has a different contract start date, some start in July, some start in August, some start in September. And so depending on that, we found that it was just going to be easier on our payroll to separate it out, and we were just going to pay everybody, assuming they work their current seven and a half, eight hours, six hours, depending on what employee they are, all the way back for forty hours, just a regular work, pay them up. And then, because that, because we're paying out in December, we don't know if they're going to get overtime on December 20th. And so we're going to wait till December 20th hits, and then in January, go back from their beginning to December 20th to catch up all the overtime.
Thank you.
Dr. Skelton, thanks for all your work on this. I know it's been challenging for the last four, five months, and again, thanks to the community for supporting SASD in this move forward, especially for our staff. So thank you for all your hard work. Thanks to the administration for all their hard work, too, so appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. It's been a bunch of people behind the scenes working this out, because money is important, and getting it right is important.
Any other questions for Dr. Skelton? Thank you, Dr. Skelton. I just want to also just reiterate the fact that, appreciate this community, appreciating our staff and people who are working every day to help educate kids in this community. So thank you again to the community for supporting that, and thank you, Dr. Skelton, for your presentation. All right, next, we have consent items A through D. That is, consider donations, the minutes from October 2nd, October 21st, and October 28th, our board meetings and special meetings, the update on our annual T-Test Certified Appraisal List, and bid 20-014 for curriculum and instruction materials. Do I have any board questions or comments regarding consent items A through D? Do I have a motion regarding consent items A through D?
Make a motion to approve the consent items A through D?
A motion from Mr. Gallegos. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Royal got there first, ladies first. Mr. Royal gets the second. So a motion for Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mrs. Royal. Any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have considered bills, accounts, and financial statements for October of 2024. So I have a motion from Mr. Dindal. Any other board comments or questions? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Dindal, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any other comments?
Dr. Keeman, just a note to those watching on our public access channel, and those in the room, that all these reports were reviewed previously in our pre-agenda meeting, and looked over pretty carefully. And now, they can also be found online. For anybody that wants to look at those, they're on our website, sasd.org. Under the District tab, you'll find a tab marked Financial Transparency, and all the reports that we've reviewed last week will be there for their perusal also.
So a motion from Mr. Dindal, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have considered Annual Title III Program Evaluation, and Bertha Sepulveda is going to help us with that. Thank you.
Bring it down just a little bit. Good evening, Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. Is this okay, or do I need to go louder? Good? Okay, perfect. So I'm Bertha Sepulveda, Director of Emergent Bilingual and English Language Services. I'll provide our Title III program update. Have the clicker? Thank you. Okay. So an emergent bilingual student, which we also say EB's, is in the process of acquiring English, and has another language as their primary language. Our emergent bilingual students represent seven percent of our total district enrollment. Our emergent, of emergent bilingual students has increased by 205 students in the past five years. In Texas, we have 1.3 million emergent bilingual students. They make up 24% of our student population. Each year, the number of emergent bilingual students identified has increased. It was one in five students were EB's. Now it is closer to one in four students. If you look at the elementaries, I think I need to go a little bit higher, maybe, the elementaries, I just put our top three schools that have our emergent bilinguals, and then our secondaries, I did less than everybody on there. So we currently have 909 students that we serve. So how do we serve our EB's, our emergent bilingual students? We currently use two models to serve our emergent bilingual students. We have the bilingual early exit, early exit transitional model, and ESL model. Bradford Elementary serves our emergent bilingual students with a bilingual model. We have pre-K through third grade with our certified, bilingual certified teachers. Our fourth and fifth graders are served by ESL certified teachers. We use the ESL model for all other elementaries and for secondary campuses. This year, we filed thirty-seven ESL waivers. We file waivers when an EB student does not have a teacher with the appropriate certification, which would be English as a second language. As the number of emergent bilingual students increases, we also need our teachers to acquire the ESL certification. Teachers need to challenge a test to get that certification. One of our goals is to increase our district number of certified teachers. We work closely with HR to support our teachers in obtaining their ESL certification. So how are our emergent bilingual students performing? Our emergent bilingual students are making academic progress. We have been monitoring last year's third graders at Bradford Elementary. These students began the bilingual program, and its first year, they were our kindergarten group. These emergent bilingual students surpassed grade-level peers on their first reading and math star for last year. In addition to the star assessment, emergent bilingual students also take the TELPOS assessment. So the TELPOS assessment is Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment. It evaluates their English language acquisition. The number of students that are scoring Advanced High is also improving. When students achieve Advanced High, they are designated as English proficient and do not need the same level of support. This past year, we had ninety-nine students achieve that Advanced High measure in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So at this point, they don't need any more ESL support. They're able to read, write, and English very proficient, and are making academic progress. And that ninety-nine students, we hope to increase that every year with the supports that we have in place for each of our schools. I lost my train of thought. The students, so once they exit, and they go into that ninety-nine, then the students are being able to stay with English proficiency. They don't go backwards. They're definitely making that progress. They're ready to go. Okay. So our emergent bilingual students continue to have expanded opportunities for success in SASD as we focus on family engagement. Understanding these partnerships are essential in ensuring high levels of student achievement. We provide several parent events such as Manos Salaobra, EB Parent Night sessions, and registration assistance. In addition, SASD is committed to also investing in our educators through professional learning and growth to ensure all students have high-quality educators. This year, teachers in the bilingual program implemented a ring curriculum in Spanish that is aligned to the curriculum in English, which has allowed both language acquisition and reading skills to be centered on learning. None of this would be possible without your, the SASD School Board, support of our program. Thank you. As we continue to help our emergent bilingual students become future-ready graduates, we are grateful for all the ways that you champion these students and families in our community. We often say that being bilingual is a superpower. It might be said that supporting bilingual students is a superpower in and of itself. It takes all of us to ensure the success of all students. Thank you for your time tonight. Do we have any media questions?
Yeah, Ms. Sepulveda, I was going to ask you, like, you said we had ninety-nine that transitioned out of the program?
Yes, sir.
Now, do we, how do we keep track of them after?
So...
Like, usually, what grade are they when they usually...
So they're, that's going to be all the second through twelfth grade, and then we keep track because they go into first-year monitor. They're actually monitored for first year, second year, third year, fourth year. So we monitor their progress, their progress every year.
Oh, good, good. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments? Only thing I'd like to say is, when this program started several years ago, we was great, we had all this national and state data that this was going to work, and that this was the right way to educate children in their native language so that they could become proficient in English and language, and they would do better long-term. And I know there was questions from a lot of people, whether that was going to work or not, or how it was going to work, and the fact that we have local data now that supports that is a testament not only to the way, the thought process that went through it in the first place, but also the work that previous Bradford Elementary principals and directors are now doing to make sure that that's, that we're serving all of our kids well. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
All right. We do need to approve the 2425 Annual Title III Evaluation. So do I have a motion to approve that?
Move for approval.
A motion from Mr. Dindal.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. Next, we're going to consider the canvas of the November 5th, 2024 general election, which is our Proposition A, and Dr. Brandon's going to help us with that.
Good evening, Dr. Moran, Dr. Keeman, Board of Trustees. The Section 67.003 of the Texas Election Code states that the canvassing of the election take place no earlier than the third day after election, no later than the fourteenth day. And so on the thirteenth day, we have received the election results from the County Elections Administrator. This evening, we present those to you. Our administrative recommendation is to approve the canvas, the order canvassing the returns of the voter approval tax rate election held in the district on November 5th, 2024. Nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine votes for, thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five votes against, with the Proposition A passing.
Any questions for Dr. Brandon? Do I have a motion regarding the canvassing of the November 5th, 2024 general election?
It could be moved for approval of the official canvas of the vote, the voting returns for the voter approval tax rate election held in the district on November 5th, 2024.
So I have a motion for Mr. Dindal. Do I have a second?
A second.
And a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. Any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. All right.
Anything you need tonight, an executive?
Maybe, no, none, none executive, just a reminder that tomorrow's meeting, that was posted because we weren't sure that we'd get these, will not be needed at this point.
So the meeting tomorrow at noon will be canceled, because we have completed that action item tonight. Other announcements is we have a pre-agenda workshop on December 9th at 5:45, and a regular board meeting on December 16th at 5:45. And with that, we will be adjourned.